I call this meeting of the July fourteenth session of the Alamo County School Board to order. And out of the closed meeting, we first need the motion to certify that nothing was discussed that was not in the original motion. So Dr. Acuff.
Yes, Chair Page. I move that the boards certify by recorded vote that to the best of each board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Lee, that we certify that nothing was discussed in the closed session except for what was in the original motion. Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the motion carries. And out of the closed session, Ms. Osborne.
Yes. I move that we nominate Dr. Stacy England for the principal position at Croze Elementary and Art Stowe as the interim principal of Scottsville Elementary.
Second.
It's been moved that we nominate Stacy England as principal at Croze and Art Stowe as principal at Croze Elementary. Any discussion on the motion?
Scottsville.
Second by Ms. Lee.
Oh, no, Art Stowe at Scottsville.
Okay, what did I say?
Some.
Okay, well, anyway, Art was wrong. So anyway, it's Scottsville. So any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, so the motion carries. We will now have the pledge of allegiance. Okay, and now to introduce the members of our board. Our student reps that's for this semester, not here tonight, they'll be, or the person will be at the next meeting. But our regular board members, Dr. Kate Acuff.
I'm Kate, Kate Acuff, Jagewett District.
Mr. Jono Alcarro.
Jono Alcarro, at large.
Ms. Judy Lee.
Judy Lee, Ryvanna District.
Ms. Ellen, Ellen Osborne. Okay, and I'm Graham Page, Samuel Miller District. We will now have a moment of silence. Could I have a motion to approve our agenda for tonight?
I move we approve the agenda for tonight.
I second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Dr. Acuff, that we approve the agenda. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we need a motion to approve our consent agenda for tonight.
I move we approve the consent agenda for tonight.
I second.
Moved by Ms. Osborne, second by Mr. Alcarro and Dr. Acuff, that we approve the consent agenda.
I would like to pull item three point six for discussion.
Okay. Okay, with the, after pulling item three dash six from the, from the consent agenda, we will vote on the remainder of the agenda. So Ms. Johnston.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Motion carries. Okay, Ms. Lee.
I just wanted to bring back the point about PTO donations. We had that big donation, not necessarily PTO donations, we had that big donation last year, a couple of years ago, and we had discussed creating a, some kind of policy or some kind of language to ensure that there's equity across the division with that. And I think that the discussion just kind of dropped at that point, so I just wanted to bring that back up and provide that discussion, not necessarily to any of the points in this. But I think Dr. Haas had offered staff support for like an ad hoc committee or whatever group is possible to discuss that. And I just wanted to see if people on the board had appetite for that. I would like to discuss that.
If we, I also noticed an enormous, you know, range of, across our schools, there's an enormous range of the ability of the PTOs or PTA to make contributions for the schools. I think one way we're addressing that is the establishment of the Albemarle Education Foundation. That we should be up and running by the end of the year. That's certainly the goal, which would make funds available across, I mean, the exact comp, how we do that is not yet ironed out, but that, the goal is to provide more equity across the schools. But that doesn't really touch your specific issue of the great variability and inability of PTOs to support the students in their schools.
I recognize it's a very touchy issue between schools and PTOs and PTAs. I'd be up for a conversation about it.
I would also be up for the conversation about that. Ms. Lee, would you be okay or satisfied if we would have the staff to look at this and then bring us back our report in alignment with the fact that the foundation should be up and operating by the end of the year?
Yeah, I think that I would like to be able to give a little bit of guidance or have some discussion on the board of guidance of what we would be bringing back. Because like, I personally would be interested in seeing maybe a history of these donations by school for 10 years. But I don't know what other people are interested in seeing in this staff report.
I would very much like to see what, exactly, what is the school by school record of donations? I know we've had, you know, softball field donated, or we've had other schools having fundraisers for winter coats. There's an enormous discrepancy. We've had, you know, one of our elementary schools' PTOs was extraordinarily generous and put together a $42,000 fitness track, which couldn't, which was maybe two years ago. And I absolutely think that, you know, the community should be generous with their local schools. But I also think we might be able to do more than we've done.
And I think one thing that needs to be, make us informed on is the legality of potentially moving funds between schools and how that can be done appropriately, or if it comes up into one fund that gets, you know, I mean, there are so many different possibilities, there are so many traps in that, too. You know, but I think knowing what the legal side of that would be, it would be important.
I would, I would stay away from that, Jono, but rather look at this with an eye towards how does that shape the programming priorities that come out of the Albemarle Education Foundation? I think that would be a better.
Right.
Well, I think a start is information.
Yeah.
Right, the information, what disparities are there? Yes.
And how can that help shape?
Right.
But a start is the information. I mean, I.
I think the foundation.
We're so at the beginning of the foundation, I think we just, we first need to know, we need to understand this issue and then move from that.
Okay, Ms. Lee and Dr. Acuff, are you willing to work with staff on that committee to bring us back information?
I am.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. Just to remind the board that Ms. Osborne and I are on the board of the, of the new foundation, so we can be the liaison between the board and the foundation.
Okay. All right, so does that satisfy item three dash six with you, Ms. Lee?
It does, thank you.
Okay. So you and Dr. Acuff will be working with staff on that item and then bringing us back some information. But thank you. All right, next spotlight on education.
We need to pass.
I think we need to pass.
Oh, wait, we do need to pass that. So could I have a motion to that effect?
I move, I move that we pass or approve the consent agenda, item three point six.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Lee, second by Mr. Alcarro, that we approve item three dash six. Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne.
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro.
Yes.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
Dr. Acuff.
Yes.
Mr. Page.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item carries. All right, moving to our spotlight on education, this will be led tonight by Ms. Osborne.
Thank you, Chair Page. It's appropriate that a meeting that includes the charter school annual report on our consent agenda that we just passed, that our spotlight celebrates one of the school's most successful programs. This evening, we are recognizing a program that already has earned state honors. The Virginia State Literacy Association recently presented its Collaborative Literacy Community Award to our own community lab school for their innovative reimagining of a common program known as Literature Circles. Might add, too, that the community lab school librarian, May Craddock, is in South Carolina today presenting at the International Association of School Librarianship. This is a global organization with 1,600 members. Literature Circles is a program that has been around for some time in education, but it operated a little differently at our lab school this year. Among its most distinguishing features are the degree of student choice it champions, the participation of all teachers, not just teachers of English, the integration of book study themed discussions with school-wide curricula, and the weekly faculty meetings focused on continuous improvement. This program was developed at the start of the 2022, 21-22 school year by Ms. Craddock and the community lab faculty, including tonight's guest. There's one other feature of this program worth mentioning. Its operation coincides with a significant increase in the SOL reading scores for community lab school students. In fact, the pass rate for lab school students exceeded 90%. Like to introduce Elena Alba Cantone, is that right? Cantone, an English teacher who is instrumental this year in the program's success. Elena, we'd all like to know more about how this program unfolded and its impact on our student engagement and performance.
Thank you, Ms. Osborne. Thanks for hearing me today. The lab school is always trying new things. That's why we're a lab school, so I'm really excited to share with you what we were doing this year with literacy. I'm sorry that May is not here tonight, because she is the driving force behind a lot of those things, especially when she's our person who compiles all our cool books. So I just want to highlight a few things that drove the creation of this program and then how it has kind of impacted our students. So we realized that, I've taught text sets with Literature Circles where every student reads the same book, and that has merit. It's wonderful. I've taught in multiple schools, but we felt that because we're project-based and because we have teachers from all disciplines teaching the same content all day, we needed a different model that would highlight student choice but would also work with mixed grade levels. Because sometimes with text sets, it's very much leveled and you're having kids read the same level together. So we decided to do genre-based literacy circles where students have the option to choose the book within, they get, they pool books based on genre, May does, and then we offer them eight to 10 options. And so students at various reading levels can choose the book that they're comfortable with. And the cool part about that is that they become the expert on their book, rather than feeling like they are trying to catch up to their peers or slow down for their peers. They are the expert, and so they get to share their knowledge about their book and their peers do the same. So varying reading levels, they all get to be the one who knows the most. So we also found that with that choice, they felt like they had to advocate for their books, which was kind of cool, because then they got to share the plot and they, the other students wanted to read what they were reading. Another cool feature about it is that we teach it in a model where there's a mini lesson at the beginning, and then they spend a long period of time reading, and then they have another long period of time discussing. So they get to practice a concept that they learn at the beginning, write afterward, after they read their books. That, that concept that they're taught is also mirrored in the projects that they do that week. And the project might be science, might be social studies, could even be a math-related project, and so they're practicing those skills in a fiction context and a nonfiction context within the same week, which I think definitely contributed to the reading scores, because they were practicing the same skills across a variety of texts at the same time. And I know that when we're looking at those SOL passages, it could be a fictional text, it could be a nonfiction text, so that was really helpful for us as well. I also think it was really interesting for them to be taught, they're taught simultaneously, all of them, by, by teachers in different disciplines, and they're taught the same mini lesson, and they're led through the lit circle by different teachers in different disciplines. So we feel that that emphasis from all the teachers on literacy kind of conveyed the idea that there's literacy involved in every single subject area, in science and social studies and math, there's going to be literacy involved. And so every teacher was putting an emphasis on that every week, which was great. I also feel, and May, I think approves, that this is a program applicable K through 12. As long as you have a librarian who knows their stuff, which we do, we have great librarians, and they can pull books based on genre and offer them to kids, maybe it's graphic novels up through 500-page books, and they're all available, as long as you have that, any kid in any grade level can do this. It can be mixed grade level, it can be mixed content area, it can be team taught. So we think it's basically something you could do in any school in the division or in the United States, if we're ambitious. But I just wanted to highlight those things, because I think that sets it apart from traditional lit circles with text sets. Oftentimes, you're limited by the books that you have, and sometimes students are kind of recycling the same texts over and over, but because every kid is reading a different book, there's a lot of variety, you can always refresh what they're, what they're reading. And kids who read really quickly can read three, and then a student who needs to take their time can just read one, and, and nobody's falling behind, and nobody's pulling ahead. Everyone's kind of on the same footing. So I also think, last, last little anecdote here, I think it also helped their writing, because they were able to practice vocab and exposure to different texts throughout the week, and that exposure really helped them build their writing vocabulary and their writing skills at the same time. So they were practicing a bunch of different skills all at once in their projects and in their lit circles. And I just think this is a really great example of how the lab school, being small, trying out new things, low risk, it can really impact the greater school division. And I just think my friend Chad over here supporting us in that, I'm really grateful for that. I think it really helps us, these kids thrive, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there any questions from board members?
When I decide what book I'm going to read, I read book reviews. I mean, how do, how do you, you don't just put the books out on a table. How do you, how do you entice the kids to pick one book over another?
Right. Well, that's where May comes in, and she's just a superstar. She reads young adult literature all summer, so that she's got a background knowledge on it all. And kids frequently come up to her and say, I don't, I liked this book, what should I read next? But really, it's oftentimes the kids who recommend to each other, which I think is a really interesting byproduct of these, this type of lit circle, because they get to really passionate about their one book, because the other kids haven't read it, and they have to talk about it and explain it. So they're kind of pitching their books to each other.
And what are you reading this summer?
This summer, I've been reading some Scottish literature, escapism, just enjoying it. But I do have read The Hate U Give again, because I like that book a lot. It's a great book. All right.
Any other questions from board members? All right, thank you so very much for your report. All right, now moving to our announcements, we have two, Ms. Collins and Dr. Kaiser, that's going to give us some announcements. Ms. Collins.
Good evening. I'm Debbie Collins, Deputy Superintendent, and I'd like to give you a brief update on our summer school attendance. We have approximately 660 K through five students and 225 middle school students in our school so far this summer. We anticipate at least 100 more students in the next couple of weeks. Our first week, which has July 4th in it, is our lowest attending week. For our high school, we had 150 students attend in June to recover one or more high school credits. We have 700 students enrolled in first-time high school courses. In addition, we have about 40 students K through eight attending our extended-year summer special education programming, and 20 high school ESOL students attending specialized language development programming. So in total, we have approximately 1,800 students attending so far this summer. We will provide a summer learning update or a report in August. Happy to answer any questions.
Those numbers seem high. Are they high?
They are a little higher than usual, but a little lower than we wanted.
Ah.
When we think about how many we invited, they're a little bit less than 50% of the students we invited. So we're still hoping, principals were telling me even yesterday that they were making phone calls and trying to, to make sure that we had as many students as we could in summer learning.
Is summer learning regular school day length, or is it?
It's mornings.
It's just mornings?
Mm-hmm. And we provide lunch. Thank you.
All right, one other question.
Okay.
The 150 from high school, were those the ones that were invited to come because of some deficiency?
Those were students that hadn't finished their course from this school year, and we wanted to give them more time to finish up.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, Dr. Kaiser.
Good evening, board members. I'm Claire Kaiser, Assistant Superintendent. Tonight, I'm here to give you an update on our hiring process. This is the time of the year where the information that I'm going to share and our hiring is at best a little fuzzy. We are deeply and actively involved in hiring across the division, and at this point of the year, our numbers change daily, both, both in people that we hire as well as new positions that are posted. So, so the numbers that I, that I'm sharing with you are very, very tentative, and we will circle back as we get closer and closer to the school year. To date, we have, while our job pools across the board have bounced back a little bit from hiring season last year with regard to both the quality and the quantity in the pools, we continue to have some challenges in certain areas, and I'll address them as I share about a couple of different employee groups. To date, we have hired 131 teachers, 65 at the elementary level, 66 at the secondary, pretty evenly split there, and we have about 65 current vacancies. While this number sounds high, it is actually on par with where we typically are at this time in the summer. The areas of special education in particular, and also ESOL and mathematics, are very challenging areas for us right now, as we continue to recruit and have a number of vacancies, especially in special education. We are actively recruiting, advertising, we're doing outreach to various universities and organizations to be able to hire qualified candidates in these areas. And while they are areas of concern at this time, our goal, like always, is to have all of our positions filled as we start the school year. I'll continue to keep you updated on that. Our current vacancies in some of our support areas are as follows. In transportation, we currently have 37 vacancies, most of which are different variations and sorts of drivers. 14 of those positions are for home-to-school drivers, as we are still actively recruiting for those, those folks. In child nutrition, we've hired five child nutrition workers, but we still have 15 vacancies. And in building services, we are still looking to hire six custodial staff, and we have five maintenance positions. In our extended-day enrichment program, between our teaching assistants and our teachers, we have 11 positions to hire. In the support areas that I just mentioned, we are challenged by both low volume of applications and applicant quality. Those are both things we are trying to recruit to, to get better quality and more applicants in the pool. As I always say, we only need one person, that's the right person in the pool, but we need to get that person in the pool. We are also continuing to experience challenges in hiring for the skilled trades positions. That's not a new thing, but it, nor is it a local-only thing. It is a national trend as well for school divisions in those trades positions. And also, these areas each have a number of part-time vacancies, and we are always challenged to find part-time, part-time positions. The applicant pools in these areas do tend to be a little bit smaller than our teacher pools, and, but likewise with our teachers, we are continuing to focus on advertising and recruitment with the goal of having the positions filled. Obviously, we still have a ways to go before we start the school year, but we continue to be optimistic about our ability to hire. We will continue to update the board as we move closer to the start of the year, and we will come back in the fall to present our formal hiring update to include demographic information about our employees. So glad to answer any questions.
Dr. Kaiser, we've had a chronic challenge in hiring drivers, and I've seen some pretty well-produced commercials for the city schools, and just wondering, since this is, I know it's a chronic issue across the country, but we actually need to have someone pick up the kids.
Absolutely.
And so what is our strategy?
I've actually spent some time in the last couple of weeks talking with our human resources leadership about advertising, to your point, you know, the Charlottesville, advertising is tremendous, and, you know, I think we need to get out there and do that type of thing, and they are actually working on that.
I would, I would just add that, I was in a meeting last week with city school personnel. The commercials are great, but they, they need about 30 drivers, and they have seven right now, and that hasn't changed. So it's really, I think what we really have to focus on is restructuring transportation to lower people's expectations for what we're going to provide, so that there's less turmoil around making changes on the fly daily. So I do have a meeting coming up. Ms. Schmidt's not here today because of a, an event with her, with her child. Is she right there? Oh, I'm sorry, that's, did you want to talk a little bit about some of the, well, I'll, I'll just cover it then. But we do have a meeting coming up with our transportation staff to talk about changes in programming, structures, tiers of services, so that as we go into the school year, we're not going in like we did last year, where we were saying we're going to provide everything we always have, and then continue to have the driver shortage to impact that daily. So that's going to be sort of like the airlines are doing right now, where they're trying to schedule all the ways that they used to schedule, and then you go to the airport and you're told there's no flight. They're, they're scaling everything back. So we just need to get to a point where we know what we're going to be providing.
Well, I just don't want to have another parent letter saying my eight-year-old was waiting at the corner for two hours. And, and even now, I mean, I mean, I'm sure the public is aware, but even now, we are still, you know, asking parents to drive, and I know, it's sort of a, you don't really want to be outside Agner Hurt when the parent queues are coming in both directions. I mean, even with that, we're having challenges. So anybody who wants to drive for the county, here's the commercial. Apply.
Absolutely. And it's my understanding that there are some drivers going through training right now. They don't count as hired yet, because they're not in the system, so, again, that, hopefully you'll see a shift in those as we come back.
But I think managing, managing parent expectations and making sure we have a genuine backup plan is, is really critical.
Yeah, this, this is, it's a pandemic, it really has accelerated the problem, but it's a legacy problem.
Right.
And for many years, we've tried to pretend, or maybe, maybe some force of nature will bring. bring us bus drivers. But the reality is that we just have to start accepting that we're going to have diminished bus programming until we get to a point where something changes. I don't know what it will be, but we have to actually have the programming match the staffing that we have.
I mean, the only good thing that I noticed about the very well-produced commercials is that the benefits that they're offering aren't substantially different than ours. So we're not competing on price or benefits.
And we are, we did have a meeting I mentioned last week where we talked with representatives from Charlottesville Schools, Charlottesville Transit, the Thomas Jefferson Planning District, Transit Authority, to start talking about ways that we can work together instead of competing with each other for the drivers. There are, there's some low-hanging fruit, especially around students with special needs and special transportation needs where we're both going, we're both taking a single student in a car or a van to the same place whereas we could be working together on some of those things. And then we're, I agreed on behalf of the school system to participate in a large-scale study of Charlottesville in Almaral to really overlay the situation and create a map of opportunities for us to work together. So we're trying to put out the fires by, really, again, I think we just have to manage everyone's expectations. And there's going to be longer wait times, there are going to be double backs. We just need to let people know that that's the way it's going to be and not pretend it's not going to be that way and then they'll have to make choices about transportation.
I just, we just need to be talking with them soon. I mean, it's cool as moments away.
Dr. Haas, the topic had come up, I think during budgeting, but I'm not sure if it was in this year's budget, for potentially buying vans.
So what, we are actually purchasing four buses that we refer to as A buses, which are a bus of diminished size that doesn't have the same licensure requirements. You do not need a CDL to drive the A bus, which will, I do believe, help us to acquire drivers for those buses at a greater rate than we are for CDL licensed buses. You still have to go through training through our transportation department and you still have an assessment before you can start driving, you know, for safety and practicing. But it should lower the hurdle that people have to jump over to get that CDL. So we do have four online right now.
Do we have anybody hired for those or the follow-up is if we don't or we have some that aren't filled? If people decide to come on and show interest now, would the training get them ready to go by the beginning of the school year?
I do think that is a Ms. Schmidt question. I don't go that deep. I haven't been that deep. Thank you, Ms. Alcaro. Sorry, Ms. Schmidt, I didn't realize.
Roslyn Schmidt, Chief Operating Officer. I will verify with Ms. White, our director. I don't believe those A-type buses will be here for the start of the school year, so we have some time to recruit. We're still analyzing the best way to utilize them, whether that's a route or a supplemental thing. So still under development. I think, I believe in the middle of the year, we are expecting them.
We did, we were, I think, while you're up here, this is kind of a questions slash statement, but we were able to finally get around to purchasing the vans for our elementary and middle schools.
We are very close. So we, based on feedback from schools, were very, they were very interested in passenger vans, right, to support either after-school opportunities or an event where a kid misses a bus, they can go out and get the kid. We ran into some significant inventory issues. If anybody's tried to purchase a vehicle, you know how difficult it is. We had many difficulties finding them, but we are this much closer and we do expect those at the beginning of the school year.
So are we looking at this driver shortage in sort of a long-range planning type thing? Because we have such a transportation-intensive school division, it seems like, because a lot of our secondary programs take a bus and you go to a, oh, sorry. So I was just wondering if we're looking at that in the same way? Is that me?
We're, that's not your microphone. Speaking of buses, that sounds like a bus. But we, that was the gist of the meeting that we had was that we are going to look at this, this is going to be, it's a legacy problem. I'd like to have as us, as our legacy so that someone five years from now, 10 years from now says, okay, they finally got together and dealt with this as a long-term problem that is going to get resolved regionally and not just with each school, the two school systems competing with each other and not sharing services. So you're right in alignment with what we are working on. We've got the short-term issues of what we've got coming up this year and I think we're trying to do the best we can to do things that, like I said, low-hanging fruit, you know, have vans at the elementary and middle schools and purchase A buses and, you know, work on things around electric buses and other changes that we can make over time. But we're also working together to do a comprehensive study that was sparked by members, by Diantha McKeel and some other staff of the Board of Supervisors.
Thanks.
Okay, going back to those meetings, is John involved in those too?
John was not at this meeting, I don't think. No, they weren't at the meeting.
They were not at that particular meeting, but there is a larger regional conversation that they're a part of, yes.
They're part of, they were definitely part of the conversation.
Absolutely.
If possible, I'd love to have an update sometime in August, right at the start of school.
We also talked about having a, potentially inviting a board member to those meetings, so.
Correct. An update on just transportation in general, just hours.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Schmidt.
All right, thank you, Ms., Dr. Kaiser and Ms. Schmidt. In the school board and superintendent business, we need to appoint, the board needs to appoint our delegate and alternate to the Virginia School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. Currently, it's Katrina, I think, is our delegate and who's that?
We don't have anyone. It's just appointed annually.
And Ms. Alcaro, the alternate. All right, so we do need to appoint or either reappoint.
I move we reappoint Ms. Coulson.
I really liked her work in that, yes.
Yes, indeed. Was that a motion?
I move that we reappoint Ms. Coulson to be our delegate.
Second?
And what about an alternate?
I'll do that again.
Okay. Could the motion be amended or expanded to include that?
I move that we appoint, reappoint Ms. Coulson as our delegate and Mr. Alcaro as the alternate delegate.
Second?
All right, move by Dr. Acuff, second by Ms. Lee, that we appoint, that we reappoint Ms. Coulson as our delegate and Mr. Alcaro as our alternate to the Virginia School Board Association's Delegate Assembly. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston?
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Mr. Alcaro?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the motion carries and thank you. And in her absence, we also thank Ms. Coulson for accepting, should be positioned also. We are now ready for public comment.
Oh, I actually had one.
Okay.
Business. I just want to mention that a couple of weeks ago, on the week of June 19th, Ellen and I were, had the great opportunity to join several ACPS educators to take the Charlottesville Civil Rights Tour through the Jefferson School African-American Heritage Center and the Memory Project of the UVA Democracy Initiative. For more than a week, we traveled to historic sites in the deep south to learn about slavery in the United States and then Jim Crow and civil rights, the civil rights movement and continuing civil rights struggles. And it was just an incredible opportunity to learn the history of our nation alongside a lot of community members. And for myself, I can say it was not the history that I learned. So it was meaningful to get some sense of what I don't know, which is immense, and to know what resources are available to our division and the teachers in our division and have, so that they can help teach our students a complete history of the United States. Ellen, I don't know if you wanted to add to that?
That was great. I would like to give a shout-out to the UVA Law School who sponsored, I know they sponsored me. My impression was they sponsored a lot of educators, but I'm not, I'm not quite sure who else was a sponsor, but it was UVA Law School.
Great. Also, when we came back, we, Ellen, Kate and I were able to see a little bit of the reforming, reframing the narrative, sorry, work that the elementary teachers were doing. And I found that really hopeful and good. I don't know how you all felt about it.
And on the trip, I was very impressed with some of the Almaral County teachers that were just really soaking it all in. There was definitely a big hunger for this knowledge. So if we get the opportunity to send more teachers in the future, we should definitely do it.
Yeah, and people, administrators, teachers, other board members, hopefully.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Lee, for that reporting, Ms. Osborne. And it is good to know that that does align with our reframing the narrative program. So thanks so much for your report. Dr. Haas, do you have anything?
No, sir.
Any other board members? All right, now moving to our public comment. Mr. Alcaro.
Thank you, Mr. Page. Our public testimony guidelines are as follows. We ask the speakers adhere to the following protocols. Please state your name and address or magisterial district. Please address your comments to the school board as a whole. Please limit comments to those matters that are relevant to school board governance or school division operations. If you are not able to complete your presentation in the time allotted, please give your written statements and other supporting materials to the clerk and it will be passed out to all of the school board members. Three minutes will be allowed for each presenter to speak. A commenter will be required to discon, excuse me, a commenter will be required to discontinue comment after three minutes. A color-coded light or card system is used to time presentations. The yellow light means the speaker is two minutes into their presentation and the red light means the speaker is at the three-minute limit of the presentation and must wrap up. In order to maintain respect for all points of view, the school board requests no clapping, booing, or other audible form of support or non-support be used. Debate and dialogue with the school board is not allowed. We have three public commenters tonight. First up is Kayden Wright, then Liz Konig and Marcella Brightson. Mr. Wright?
Okay. Good evening. I'm Kayden Wright, a student at Almaral High School and Monticello High School and a resident in the Rio District. I'm here to ask the Division to prioritize school security through the use of collective bargaining in the 2022 to 23 school year. Last year's schools weren't safe. On the high school level, many issues were present. Some notable ones were school shooting threats, violence, racism, smoking, vaping, truancy, trespassing, drug use, and the list continues. Tonight, Division administrators will present to you a security plan that creates more infrastructure in ACPS. If working conditions in ACPS aren't suitable, staff members cannot ensure school security with this infrastructure. What good are new electronic doorbells in AHS if the people responsible for maintaining it are exhausted and overworked? How can you base security needs off of polls that administrators struggle to get students to participate in? Due to issues like these, there's been a vulnerability in our security system and students are abusing it. Yet, instead of changing and improving the human aspect of this system, the Division is doubling down on the technological aspect. They will present a plan that will fail because staff aren't given the proper resources to make it succeed. How can you expect disgruntled and jaded staff members with no voice in decision-making to properly enforce a complicated security system? If you want to solve the problem of school security, you will have to open two-way communication to Division employees through collective bargaining. Work with the community to solve the problem of school security. The only thing you could do that would be worse than ignoring this issue is attempting to implement a solution that will not work. Without decent working conditions, staff will not be able to enforce your policies. Please, don't be complacent. Can you confidently say that ACPS would be able to deter or even detect an active shooter in one of its schools before it was too late? Will this plan solve the issues we faced last year and does our current system actually protect students? I'll say it again, the proposed security system has not worked and will not work because staff are not given the resources to make it work. How can you expect teachers or students to be successful in a learning environment if they are not safe? You can change this. It is in your hands to ensure that no student is unsafe in Almaral County Public Schools and it is your responsibility to ensure that Division employees have the resources they need to keep everyone safe. Let's work together to make Almaral County Public Schools a better place and find solutions that benefit everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Ms. Konig?
Good evening. My name is Liz Konig and I'm a teacher at Woodbrook and secretary, incoming secretary of the Almaral Education Association. On May 12th, the board denied the collective bargaining resolution submitted by the AEA on behalf of over 1,400 employees and directed the superintendent to explore meaningful meet-and-confer options and other alternatives with the instruction to report back in 90 days. This directive and its implementation are an inadequate and inequitable response to your staff's desire to engage in collective bargaining. The first email that staff received about the opportunity to participate in a steering committee related to employee voice and engagement was on June 13th, one month after the board action. The message hit my email inbox at 2:36 PM, a mere hour or so before teachers' contracts ended for the school year and a full three days after teachers' aides' last day of work. Many support staff do not have county laptops or had already turned them in for the year and are not expected to check work email during the summertime, effectively excluding them from participating in the process. The email had no specifics on the number or timing of the meetings, the amount of compensation, yet asked for a response by the end of the week. Those who expressed interest were eventually given a list of four dates, all during normal business hours on weekdays. From the get-go and with the rushed timeline, many staff members are unable to serve on this committee, especially those staff that have to work non-ACPS full-time jobs during the summer to make ends meet, whose voices critically need to be heard and listened to. I am on the steering committee and we've just met for the first two times this week. Everyone involved is gamely trying their best to engage in what you've asked for productively and with good intentions. But the premise of the exercise falls flat. We're tasked with finding an avenue to increase employee voice and engagement in decision-making as long as it's not the one that over 1,400 employees support. Anything that this steering committee decides on, a steering committee composed of a few dozen employees who happened to get the email, who happened to have the last-minute availability to participate, who are lucky enough to have the resources to be able to attend, anything that we decide on simply cannot be as valid as the action of 1,400 workers. Employees will do the work you ask for in creating another employee engagement process. We're in education. We always do the work, but you cannot create trust out of thin air. Why should we trust that your stated desire to listen and to engage meaningfully with us will come to a different end than our request for the same thing in May? You have before you tonight a list of 35 more employees resigning, bringing the total number of resignations this school year to 158. If I'm reading the chart right, at least 25 more than the highest total amount in the last four years. Teachers are a finite resource and the further trust erodes, the more you will lose. I ask you again to work with us to come up with a resolution that allows your employees to bargain collectively with you about the conditions of our employment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Konig. Ms. Brightson?
Hi. My name is Marcella Brightson and I am a member of the Scottsville magistrate district, as well as I'm a teacher at Dewitt Journey Middle School, and I'm transitioning to community lab school in the fall. So a couple of weeks ago, you decided you did not feel comfortable with the proposition of collective bargaining and in its stead, you issued the directive that HR work with community, with county staff to develop a new system to hear and collect employee feedback. Following this decision, there was a lot of stress, anxiety, and questions that surround this process as well as the past school year. In an effort to address the concerns of myself and my colleagues, I am one of the many county employees, few county employees, that have decided to respond to that directive and I am standing here. to that directive, and I am standing here, offering you guys an invitation. This invitation is to be a part of that process that you have agreed is important. You, the school board, are one of the many stakeholders in this creationary process, and in the interest of building bridges and hopefully trust, I am inviting you to be a part of it. Come join some of our meetings at Journey. Talk to the people who teach, who bus our students, who support their learning and after-school programming, who work at the front desks and keep the books. Be a part of our problem solving and our collaboration. The effort that it takes to show up would help to demonstrate the dedication you've tried to articulate to the county about the value of us employees and of our feedback. Come and listen, or give input, or sit quietly, or make a statement, or don't make a statement, or just get to know somebody new who works here. But each of you who choose to get involved with this, to show genuine interest in the development process, your attention will not be forgotten, especially by those of us involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brightson. Mr. Page, I turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Elkar, and thank you to our speakers for tonight. Our next item on the agenda, the update on school safety by Dr. Turner and Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening. I'm Jesse Turner, the director of Student Services. The Director Building Services, Lindsay Snoddy and I are here this evening to provide an update to the school board about the investments you have been making to increase the safety of our students, employees, families, and community members. Our purpose in presenting tonight is threefold. We are presenting a safety framework for ACPS operations, sharing a common understanding of what we have in place, and providing a brief update to the Board regarding your investments in school safety. This presentation will discuss how we are addressing prevention with our school communities, improving the physical security at all of our facilities, developing a more robust safety response structure, and adding personnel who are dedicated to and matters of school safety. This is a very thorough presentation on our safety framework, and Ms. Snoddy and I will ask that you please make notes of any questions that you may have, so that you can ask them at the end of this presentation. When we start with our vision and mission in mind, we are more likely to use our strategic plan as our roadmap to ensure that we promote safety and well-being within the framework of our core values, of equity, of excellence, family and community, and wellness. Further, we see how resourcing and taking action to provide a safe teaching and learning environment promotes all three of our broad strategic goals of thriving students, affirming and empowering communities, and providing equitable and transformative resources. An essential ingredient to accomplish the affirmation and empowerment of our communities is to support the physical and mental health of students, employees, and families. We feel most empowered when we are safe to teach, learn, and grow. Our sources of input for this school safety framework include the School Safety Advisory Committee, peer-reviewed research, stakeholder feedback, state requirements, and experience from past years. Our framework for school safety includes prevention, protection, and mitigation, and response, and recovery. Prevention means a reduction in the number of threats, as well as an increase in our ability to detect them. Protection and mitigation consist of the detection and delay of an incident, of any incidents. Response and recovery are the steps that we take to remedy consequences related to incidents, followed by the return to normal afterwards. Much of our work in response and recovery overlaps with our prevention work, so those will be intertwined throughout this presentation. I would add that personnel transcend these three, and our safety coaches, whom I'll discuss later in this presentation, are involved in each of these categories. As I mentioned earlier, an essential ingredient to accomplish the affirmation and empowerment of our communities is to support the physical and mental health of students, employees, and families. We feel most empowered when we are safe to teach, feel safe to teach, learn, and grow. The ACPS Mental Health Supports and First Aid Initiative is designed to support each individual student's mental health and social, emotional needs, based on information and feedback from the student. Tiers of the model line up with the safety framework, beginning with tier one, which is prevention services, tier two, targeted needs, and tier three, referral and outpatient services. ACPS began using the anonymous alerts app in 2019. It has become, it, it has become a source of information to help mitigate a potential safety threat to a person or school facility. Administrators use information provided through the app to investigate a tip, contact students and families involved, and resolve a situation and/or alert the school community while enhancing safety measures. The ACPS Threat Assessment Model is an example of a strategy that, in many respects, covers all aspects of the safety framework, but in particular, it is a tool for preventing a crisis. All schools that encounter a threat go through a process to determine actions to be taken. The first step in the threat assessment process is to identify subjects or situations whose behavioral impact is concerning or threatening. Most cases originate from information and observations that are provided by the threat assessment team by concerned members of the community. The team may also monitor for and identify patterns of behavior that may indicate a threat or concern that has not yet been reported by persons outside the team. Inquire and gather additional relevant information about the subject or situation that is reasonably, lawfully, and ethically available to the team. Beyond the initial report, the team considers what else, if anything, may be known about the situation or those involved. The focus of the threat assessment inquiry is not primarily to prove a case, but rather to understand the situation and how best to address any related concerns. Some threat assessment cases may also involve an administrative or law enforcement investigation to determine if a policy or criminal violation has occurred. Assess the case comprehensively, considering the totality of information that is reasonably, lawfully, and ethically available, and make an assessment of the situation, determine what conclusions can be reasonably drawn, and identify what other information may be needed to help the team better understand and manage the case. Manage the needs of the case, develop, implement, monitor, and adjust strategies to manage the situation, to prevent violence and other harm where possible, to reduce and mitigate impact of the situation, to address unmet needs of persons involved, to minimize the future impact of any contributing factors that may stem from the school environment or systems, and to consider contingencies for reasonably foreseeable events that may impact us upon the case. When school administrators presented with a potential safety threat and, and a person, usually a student, is identified as the source of the threat, rather than suspending the student offhand, the administrator convenes a team made up of a counselor, administrator, and mental health professional to determine the nature and severity of the threat before taking school disciplinary action or pressing charges. This approach leads to fewer out-of-school suspensions and more restorative practices. The act of creating a crisis plan and practicing its use with a team for feedback is work done squarely in the protection and mitigation phases of safety work. The tabletop exercise is a meeting to discuss a simulated emergency situation. Members of the campus review and discuss the actions they would take in a particular emergency, testing the emergency plan in an informal, low-stress environment. Tabletop exercises are used to clarify roles and responsibilities and to identify additional campus mitigation and preparedness needs. The exercise should result in action plans for continuing improvement of the emergency plan. For these reasons, crisis planning also falls into the response and recovery aspects of our safety framework. Now, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening. I'm Lindsay Snoddy, Director of Building Services, and I'm here to touch on the physical safety improvements, both at a baseline level and also what we've done for recent improvements to the physical safety of our campuses. So, as you recall, one of our sources of input when making decisions about safety improvements is state requirements. Among those state requirements is SEPTED, which stands for Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. These principles include natural surveillance, natural access control, territorial reinforcement, and maintenance of our campuses, such as landscape management to remove blind spots. We do regular SEPTED inspections of each school with a team of professionals from both our staff, also law enforcement, and the Alamo ECC, to have a lot of different perspectives on each of our campuses. There, we do about eight inspections per school year, and each school has a three-year rotation for the SEPTED inspections. This slide shows our standard physical safety measures. The items in bold are ones that are recent improvements to, to our campuses. For emergency communication, we have panic buttons at each school that calls 911, emergency phones that can call central office or other locations, and we've just added emergency ECC 800 megahertz radios. Those were added as a backup method for communication. If all else fails, you can communicate between schools and to central office and to the emergency communications center with those radios. Those will be in place for the new school year. At the, another one issue I want to discuss at the emergency communication level is we have basic communication in place. Administrators have cell phones that are issued by the Division, and we also have handheld radios that are used frequently at the schools for regular communications. For video and alarms, we have interior and exterior security cameras at all locations. A recent initiative is expanding and upgrading the cameras that are currently in our schools. I'll speak more to that a little bit later as well. And at all locations, we have a building security system that arms the buildings in the evenings and during the weekend hours. Property and building perimeter, we have blinds and shades, so during a lockdown event, you can pull the shades down and there's no visibility into the classrooms. We do landscape maintenance around the perimeter, again, to remove the blind spots and make sure somebody couldn't hide behind a large, large bush or tree. We have signage. That's part of the SEPTED principles, is making sure that the entrance is clearly communicated, that you're showing that this is a school facility. And we also have, this is an initiative probably four or five years ago, the large numbers, A1, A2, A3, that you'll see on our campuses. Those are intended to help emergency personnel quickly get to a location in the event of an emergency. We also have all the doorways marked. Every exterior doorway is marked with a number around the building clockwise, and we also have all the places inside the school labeled, like classroom numbers and workrooms are also labeled with numbers. For access control, we recently installed the Buzzin camera systems in the front entrances. Those are all operational, and we are looking at the, through the summer, we're finishing up the work to control the door from the main office into the school, and we'll look at that detail a little bit later. We also are finishing up the installation for the card readers, and those are at the main exterior doors around each campus. For identification, part of that card reader addition that we did gave us the ability to badge all of our staff members. So, instead of waiting for staff to have to get their photo taken by Lifetouch or our vendor for school photos, we can now badge them immediately upon hire. That badge that they get is also their key card, so we assign their access level at that time. And the visitor management system, we recently upgraded that system. That's in every main office. A visitor will go through the Buzzin camera system, enter the main office, complete the visitor management system, and then if everything passes, they'll go into the main office. So here's a little more detail. I'll talk through each stage of, of the controlled vestibule and the office area. The picture you see on the left, that's our Buzzin system at the front doors. You'll see a welcome message so people know what to do with this camera system when they see it. And then, once you press that button, you're in communication with the office administrators. The office administrator will ask your purpose and why you're there to visit the school, and if they're satisfied with the answer, they'll proceed into the main office to go through the visitor management system. So that's entry through door two. Door one, that you'll see in the graphic, is always in the locked position. Once a visitor enters door two, they check into the visitor management system called scholarship. The system requires school visitors to scan a government-issued identification card, such as a driver's license. For visitors who do not possess this form of ID, front office staff will assist with an alternative registration process. Once registered, all school visitors will receive an official badge that they must wear for the entirety of their visit. Then, if everything goes well with the visitor management system, door three is, by the end of the summer, will be controlled by the office administrators. They'll gain access through that door. The visitor will have their badge on, and you'll see door four, which represents all the doors in that vestibule. After the students enter, that will be locked for the remainder of the day at door four. The new card reader systems allow staff to use their identification badges as their key card. This will take away the exterior keys that a lot of teachers have for our buildings. They'll still have, for classrooms where we have elementary keys to the outside, or, or elementary classrooms with doorways to the outside, they'll retain those keys, but will allow us to greatly reduce the access to exterior keys that control every entryway. Staff are assigned the appropriate levels of access to school buildings. They can be assigned, their key card can manage multiple buildings or the whole division. Benefits of the system include badging staff upon hire, the ability to quickly deactivate a card if it is lost, easy return access when teachers go outside for recess or other outdoor activities, and emergency personnel can access the building once we get their badges up and running. So, we're going to work on that shortly after all the card readers are functioning. This is a summary of school security investments going back to FY16 through FY23. The, the majority of the CIP funding was for the security vestibule construction at several schools. I'll go back a couple sides. The vestibule that you'll, that you see here is the controlled vestibule that we created with that funding. A lot of schools, you could just enter into the school without being funneled through with the main office. So, it was a large construction project at several schools. That's why it's a large dollar amount. One-time operating funding was used for Buzzin entry systems, card reader access, and will also be used for the camera upgrades and expansions that are being procured now and will extend through the, the rest of the next school year. Security upgrades in progress include door hardware improvements, a dividing fence at Alamo High School between the school pods and the new sidewalk that's under construction to allow a safe passageway around the Lambsland campus, Buzzin camera systems and card reader improvements to the new pods, and the security camera upgrade and expansion. And my portion of this, of this presentation is focused on the physical security layers in our division. I'm going to turn it back over to Dr. Turner to discuss a very important layer for our safety program, our ACPS staff.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. The ACPS staff who are working at the school level to facilitate our safety framework of mitigation, preparedness, recovery, and response of the student and school-wide level are our safety coordinator and student safety coaches. During the 2021 funded request development process, the school board directed staff to develop a safety program promoting the mental health and emotional well-being of ACPS students. The information about this proposal can be found on page A38 of the 2022 budget document. One of the primary reasons for this initiative was growing evidence that students of color are disproportionately impacted when it comes to the disciplinary infractions that result in loss of instructional time and criminalization of behavior issues. Focusing on the mental health needs of all students, individuals with training on de-escalation techniques, and emphasis on trauma-informed care, and the respect and practice grounded in equity, this program will provide a more welcoming school climate. This new student safety initiative coincides with the broader push inside ACPS to reform school discipline by taking a less punitive approach, concentrating instead on restorative strategies designed to maintain our schools as safe institutions of learning, while holding children accountable, yet maximizing instructional time and opportunities. In addition, the positions will maintain the safety and security of students, the school staff, and property, prevent unauthorized visitors and property damage. school staff, and property, prevent unauthorized visitors and property damage, and provide for general building security. Student safety coaches are employees of ACPS. They are unarmed and have no authority to carry firearms or arrest individuals for security breaches in the performance of their duties. During the budget planning process for 2022, the school board approved investment in eight FTEs to create the safety coach program during the 2021-22 school year. The initial plan to flesh out the investment was done by my predecessor, Nick King, and carried forward by Kevin Kirsch before I began working for ACPS in my current role in the summer of 2021. Since then, I have worked with Kevin and the superintendent's cabinet to secure the inputs listed on this slide. All inputs have been accomplished for the safety coach program. All activities outlined in the logic model for the safety coach program have been accomplished. While many activities have been finished for several coaches, as we have had turnover in positions, we have needed to update training for new coaches as well as provide updates for those continuing into next school year. One particular area that has been a challenge for us is the implementation of Title IX investigations as part of the model. Due to changes in the Title IX regulations, the procedures have become far more comprehensive and complex and time-consuming than in the past. While we are making it work, we continue to seek solutions to provide investigation and decision-making services for schools to ensure that our students and employees are safe and that ACPS is not exposed to liabilities. I'm happy to say that all the short-term SMART goals or outputs established in the logic model are up and running. We are not operating perfectly in every area. However, it is my assessment that schools are effectively utilizing coaches and that school staff and students are growing to depend on their presence, assistance, and These are the long-term measures proposed with the logic model. On the next slides, I will share a couple of baseline data points from the 21-22 school Seventy-one percent of the students reported a favorable impression of their school safety on our spring division-wide panorama survey for students, which is a two percentage point increase over the fall responses. As you can see from the additional panorama data points, we have had positive feedback from students and families during the program's inaugural year. The first dataset, and that's image A on this slide, shows responses from students to the question of how often they worry about violence at school. The second dataset, image B, on this slide, shows responses from families to the question of how unsafe their child feels at school overall. While I'm pleased with our work so far, there's always room for improvement. That brings me to the end of the presentation, and are there any questions?
Dr. Turner, on that last slide-
Yes, sir.
-for the panorama data, were all students invited to participate in this, or is this a high school only, or was this across the whole?
This particular data that was pulled should have been all students?
All students.
Yeah.
Who was doing the Title IX investigations before the student safety coaches were doing them?
It was in this department, and the gentleman who served as the safety coordinator basically did the investigations. But the regulations have changed and they're more stringent, and we need multiple investigators, and we're prepared to do that. We're doing that now. But just can't follow through as, with the new regs as we used to with the old regs.
I guess just to follow on what Ms. Lee asked about the Title IX investigations, do you need more staff? Do you need a different kind of staff? Or, I mean, I do understand that the regulations have changed and they're more challenging to do, but how do we fix it?
Well, yeah, well, the superintendent and the superintendent's cabinet are working with me, and we have it right now under control. Once we train the coaches, that will give us the additional investigators. Right at the moment, we have one 11-month investigator, and the safety coordinator is an investigator too, but we're filling that position as I stand here. So we will be covered for the following year.
A question. I think a lot of people believed that when we had SROs in the schools, that every school had a squadron of police officers, and we actually had, I think at the most, six, but often five for 25 schools. How are the safety coaches, and those SROs were predominantly in the high schools, but with some at a couple of the middle schools. How are we distributing the responsibilities of the safety coaches? I mean, we have 25 schools. We have eight safety coaches, fully staffed.
Right. Well, our safety coaches, part of their job is to cover schools. If we have a situation at one of the elementary schools, we send coaches. That's, we've never left an elementary principal or his or her staff in a lurch. If they call me, I send someone. I typically send a coach and the safety coordinator. And sometimes if I'm not tied up in a meeting, I'll even go. So they are covered.
Thank you. Another question, you talked a lot about the mental health, and that's a particular topic that I am keyed into, and I recently had coffee with, I guess, Miles Nelson to talk about the universe of mental health activities in our schools.
Yes, ma'am.
And I have talked also with some of the mental health counselors who have, who declared to me that they've never had a bigger caseload. And so I guess I'm asking, what does the profile of the need, the mental health needs, you know, what is it? I don't even know how to ask the question, but what kinds of things are we doing? We've added staffing for mental health over the past several years, I think, thank goodness.
Right.
But what are we seeing, and do we have the appropriate staffing? And I know you also, I'm rambling, but you also mentioned mental health first aid, and according to Mr. Nelson, it's available for teachers right now and may be rolled out for students in the next year or two?
Right, right. So I guess the first part is profile, is that profile of a student, or?
Well, just what kinds of cases are our mental health counselors seeing? I mean, what kind, yeah, that's basically it.
Well, at the school level, we have seen an uptick in students wanting to harm themselves. That's been prevalent this year. I would say that's really the main one.
That's disturbing.
That's what we've seen.
And we make referrals out for that?
Yeah, yeah. Part of the problem is that there are not a lot of beds in the state of Virginia for some of our young people who are struggling. So we're working hard in the division to continue to try to pour in to those children. Miles and Kevin just finished solidifying RFP for the counseling organization to come in and work with students. That will start this year. But some of our children who are truly struggling, the state is still, there's a lot of difficulty with finding beds.
Are there other questions? I have a couple. Dr. Turner, without getting into necessarily names, but, you know, the people, who receives the emergency calls in the central office from the schools? Where does that go to? And, or is it distributed to a number of different people, maybe on the safety team?
Okay, so like if a principal calls?
Yes, if it's an emergency call.
It's my office, it's typically me.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it depends on what the emergency might be, then I immediately get in touch with Dr. Haas and Phil, and then our system starts.
Okay.
Right.
One other question is the anonymous alert.
Yes, sir.
That's been an app that's been around for a few years.
Right.
And it got off to an okay start. How robust is that now? Is there a lot of usage of it? Is it?
Yes, we hit the refresh button this year, and it's interesting. When the school year started off, we were getting alerts that were like jokes. People thought it was funny, but then after a while, those just totally disappeared. And it's been, it's been very impactful because some of the alerts that either students have shared with us, or parents, or just people in the community have given us tips to either help children or to keep schools safe. So it's been, it's been an intervention that our school community has taken very seriously. Our teachers use it. It's been good. I mean, it's not perfect, but it has allowed us to get on top of some situations that could have become a bigger problem prior to it even happening. So it's been taken seriously, and people are using it.
Thank you. May I just ask one last question, and that is, this presentation is a great summary of what's been happening and what's been done, and I appreciate the, you know, enumerating the investments that we've made through, you know, this coming fiscal year. How far out are your future plans? And, I mean, are you looking a year out, two years out, five years out in terms of the strategy? So in other words, kind of what's next?
Yes, and part of that work is us, whom we work with, the safety committee, and Lindsay's LR PAC that-
The Long Range Planning Advisory Committee. We're shortening the meeting for both committees.
Right, so, you know, we're trying to work with, well, part of the work is working with our stakeholders so we can get some feedback, and that helps us with some of the planning as well. I mean, but right now, we're working on increasing the camera coverage, Title IX, and getting the investigators in place. So we have plans in place for now and later, but it's kind of an ongoing part of what we do. But most of our work, we're trying to work with the people around us, so we are hitting the targets.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I have another question. Sorry. When we got rid of the SRO program in favor of the safety coaches, it wasn't because, the officers that we worked with were great. I mean, I have to say that. I'm wondering what, although there were good reasons given to change our program, what is the nature of our liaison with the police department now? And have you thought about whether it's adequate, or just right, or not good enough, or?
You know, we have an extremely strong relationship with the police department. I talk with Officer Randy Jamison on a regular basis. Sometimes when we have something going on, I'm talking with Randy at 11 at night, 5:00 in the morning, Detective Wales. We, our relationship has never changed. Now, part of it is, I've been in the county, I was in the county in 2002. So a lot of these guys I've known a long time. So we do have a very strong, good relationship. So I'm working with them all the time. It's all the time. Obviously, we want to keep that relationship strong, but we have a very strong relationship, and we communicate a lot.
I have a question. You mentioned that there's been a lot of turnover in the eight, I suppose, student safety coaches. What are, you said that there were some lessons learned. What are some things that you have done differently from that turnover?
Okay, well, we've had two people in my department to leave, one coach and then the safety coordinator. So those numbers are good. I, you know, I'm not worried about that, but I think, I think what we need to continue to do is to continue to train and to keep finding the professional developments that make sense for their positions. Our people have been trained extensively, I mean, from the start of the school year. But I think that in order to stay ahead of the curve and to be in a position to truly help children and staff and families, we just need to make sure that our training is top-notch.
Okay, Dr. Turner, maybe about two or three questions related to your part of the presentation.
Yes, sir.
Part of it sort of showed or indicated exercise drills, and exactly what would be some of the things that might be covered or included in those exercise drills?
Like the tabletop?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, what happens with the tabletop is the safety coordinator will go in and meet and meet with the team at the school, and the team is chosen by the principal. So then they're given a scenario. Oftentimes, it's an active shooter. Okay? So, and the goal there is to have them work through, how do they handle that? And what we find out is, are they following their crisis plan? Do they have the pieces in place? What do they have certain individuals in the schools doing when they're in that crisis? Because it's the repetition that you hope they can call on if, for some reason, we ever have a serious situation like that. That's the, that's the tabletop, is to take those crisis teams, those school crisis teams through a scenario, one that could happen, one that may have happened somewhere in the world. But it's to exercise their crisis planning.
Okay. Then you also mentioned, and you might have mentioned this also in your answer to Dr. Acuff, but I'm not too sure. Exactly what the Title IX incidents, could you give a few examples of what that might
Most of what we've dealt with have been situations dealing with inappropriate sexual behavior, either between students or staff and students.
Okay. And then maybe two quick questions from Ms. Snotty, I think. I think your part of the presentation showed that inspection of schools, it said like eight per year?
So that's the, there are many inspections that happen throughout the year, but that's the SEPTED inspections. So that gathers a team that walks the school, works with school administrators, looks at things, I'll go back to the SEPTED principles, looks at all these items listed here. So natural surveillance, do we have good lighting at exterior doors? Walks the perimeter, looking at natural access control, do we have the defined end- Walks the perimeter, looking at natural access control, do we have the defined entrance? Are we limiting access to people who shouldn't be in the building? The territorial reinforcement, that goes back to something like Admiral's fence between that new sidewalk and the pods? Are we defining our boundary around the school? And then looking at maintenance that might need to be done around the perimeter. Some of the items we'll pick up is like, a, a shrub might be blocking a wall pack on the exterior light that might make a, a dark situation at an exterior door. And then it's also walking with the administrators just to look at all, any other safety issues that might come up within the building and around the campus.
Okay. And could you also go back to the slide that showed access control?
Sure.
Yeah.
This one?
Okay, that was, yeah.
Okay.
Are those things now in place at each of our schools?
The buzzer camera at the front entrances are in place at all school locations. The card readers are, for the majority, in place. We're still waiting on parts for a few of them, but the, the system is operational at each location. And then the control, let me go to this diagram. The control of door three in this diagram, we're still working, we're waiting on some parts for that piece, but that's, that control should be completed by the end of the summer at each school location. It's functioning at about, I'd say, half now.
Okay. So access three would allow a person to go into the actual building, like for classrooms or something, right?
So you're, we're always locked at door one. That's where we have the buzzer camera system. Then the visitor will proceed through door two, which is typically in the open position, go through visitor management, and then, once they went through that process, be granted access through door three.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thanks. Are there any other questions for board members?
I just have one, Ms. Snoddy. As you know, I've been vocal about our expanding trailer, trailer inventory. So I'm wondering if there's any additional security measures that we have for those problems?
Sure, so we've been, since the beginning, we recognize as, as an issue. So we've been adding Aphones to the pod units. So once, the same, the buzzer camera system shown on this slide is at the front entrance to the school, also on the front entrance to the pod or the main entrance to the pod, also at the main entry point for students going back into the building. So for, like Admiral, there, there was already a phone at their pod, but they're not going to come all the way to the front of the school from that back pod area to go to buzz in to get let back into the building. So there's an Aphone at that nearest entry point from the trailers back into the school facility. For a situation like Baker Butler is a little bit different at, at the elementary level because the students aren't transitioning as much. So for those, we do like a hall pass for the card reader, so the student can transition back into the building.
Thank you.
Sure. And we are, I'll add this, and Henley was, the main entry, the easiest access point was through a courtyard with some gates that were permanent, that were, had to stay in the locked position during the school day. So we're doing a pretty major construction project to add doors to that entryway, so the students can transition in through that doorway with an Aphone.
Thank you.
We're working on it.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Turner and Ms. Snoddy.
That's very good.
Great for your presentation. All right, we'll now take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back into session. All right, we'll now take a 10-minute break, and then we'll come back into session. Sound like it's on. Well, now it's on. Okay.
Try it now.
Is it, is, ah, it is on now.
Yeah.
Okay. Want to present for the board's consideration the third quarter financial reports. Just wanted to sort of hit the highlights of this particular report and, and specific highlight the changes that have taken place since the second quarter report. We have had a relatively significant change in our, our anticipated financial status for the year. It's still going to be positive for the fiscal year. But we have had a change in estimated state revenues take place. The General Assembly did take action on state revenues in April and May. Those were recently published in June, and it did result in a slight decline in what we anticipated state revenues growing by in the current fiscal year. So that's one revenue aspect that was, that went down in our, in that respect. Staff costs, in general, the other things that have changed are, are costs for the division itself. Staff costs have risen fairly significantly in the final, in the, the final period of this year, the last half. We have had improved hiring, higher sub costs. Remember, we raised the substitute rate of pay for the current fiscal year rather significantly. That, that increased costs as well. And we do also have a little bit of complicating factor of the new payroll system make it a little more difficult to do our payroll projections without a great deal of history associated with the pay process as we have it currently. So we, we brought all those in, and payroll has increased over time during this time period. Operations, costs have gone up as well. Delivery is improving in terms of items that we order being available for delivery. However, the cost of those items has risen, particularly in the last half of this year. So we are seeing the effects of inflation hitting the operational costs associated with our budget overall. And in the final aspect, our fund balance numbers for the current year, we do anticipate adding to fund balance in the current year, just not as much as the second quarter report had originally anticipated. Needless to say, we still do have anywhere between 60 and 90 days of additional work to be done to produce the fourth quarter financials. And there's still a lot of transactions that need to be cleaned up in this process. So it's possible that we'll see some improvement or, or not during the, during the last quarter of this fiscal year. But we will still start off the next fiscal year, anticipate starting off next fiscal year with a greater than $9 million balance, which would meet the vast majority of the needs that we had identified in the 2023, 2223 budget. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
The, the payroll stuff that's been ongoing, is there an end in sight to the drama?
There's, there's, there's a lot of hope in this process, but we have a lot of disparate systems. Local government has a lot of disparate systems that are running, and they don't operate very well together. So it's, it's hard to say. As we bring more systems on, we hope that the ADP system that they're going to be bringing on for HRIS may improve this process. But to date, we don't really have any real information on that at the current time. It is a painful process.
Are there other questions from the board, from Mr. Zimmerman?
Then I'll ask the board to accept the report.
I move that we accept, or we receive the third quarter financial report as presented by Mr. Zimmerman.
Second?
Been moved by Mr. Alcarro, second by Ms. Lee, that we receive the report delivered to us by Mr. Zimmerman. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Osborne, I mean, if not, Ms. Johnston.
Ms. Osborne.
Sorry about that, Ms. Osborne.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes. All right, so the motion carries. Thank you. All right, now finally, our third quarter financial report. I mean, the budget amendments. Ms. Kumazawa.
Good evening. I'm Maya Kumazawa, Director of Budget and Planning. And this evening, I'm here to provide some staff recommendations for information and for your action with regards to the FY23 budget. These changes specifically address our third goal, equitable and transformative resources. Specifically, objective two, ACPS will develop modern and environmentally sustainable facilities, infrastructure, and equipment. And objective three, ACPS will provide resources in an equitable manner that transforms learning experiences and opportunities for all students. The reason why I'm here so early after the beginning of the fiscal year is that you all adopted the FY23 budget on May 12th. And since then, the General Assembly adopted their FY23 state budget, which is a little bit later than what's typically done, been done in the past. So we built in some contingencies into our operating budget in anticipation of this. So those are the items I'm bringing forward this evening. This is a summary table of the information that we've learned. The column on the left is the FY23 School Board Adopted Budget with regards to state revenues. So we budgeted $67 million as part of the budget. And then I have three categories under there that have changed since that budget adoption on the state side. So in total, we're looking at a decrease of about $400,000 from what was adopted. There's a decrease in asked at-risk funding. This has to do with formula changes of how, how much, the level at which asked at-risk programs are covered. And then the compensation supplement, that 5% is also decreasing some, since they're funding the 5% increase beginning August 1st rather than July 1st. So that reflects that difference. And then everything else has an increase in total of about $55,000. In addition to the operations, which are on the top half of the slide, the school construction funds that we, that is in the county's FY23 capital budget of $3.6 million is reduced by about $700,000. And we're anticipating now about $2.88 million to come directly from the state to the FY23 capital budget for our school projects. And then at the bottom, I'll touch later on a one-time bonus that is part of the state budget, that is, was not part of our adopted budget. There's no action on this item, and this is just here for your information. Due to the changes that I described, these are the proposals that, the proposals to revise the FY23 capital budget with regards to schools' projects. So on the left are what the projects that are adopted as part of the FY23 to '27 CIP, and over to the right are the recommended revisions. The items that are highlighted in yellow represent changes, and then all the way to the right, you can see what the change is. So we budgeted a $5 million CIP holding account for our projects as a contingency. We plan on distributing a portion of those funds, so eliminating that project. We'd like to distribute $2 million to the high school capacity project in anticipation of increased costs, $666,000 to the Mountain View expansion and site improvement projects, also in anticipation of increased costs for base bids. And then lastly, adding $473,000 for additional parking spots at Western Albemarle High School as you all have directed in the past. I'll give you just a moment before I move on. Everything else on this slide, all the other projects, will remain as they are adopted in the FY23 capital budget. One other piece that we like to bring forward to you is a proposed contribution, one-time contribution from our school fund to the healthcare fund that is managed by Albemarle County, that we are the largest stakeholder and participants of. As you are aware, our healthcare plan is a self-funded health plan. That means that the employee premiums and employer contributions that we put into the fund pay for our medical claims and other expenses. Between March 2020 and May 22, 2022, we experienced COVID expenses that were not budgeted for, and the table on the right shows you a summary of those expenses that we've incurred. ACPS incurred about $2.2 million in unbudgeted COVID expenses. And as a recommendation from the healthcare fund steering team, we'd like to start contributing to those expenses in order to help offset, we, we are anticipating, we are looking at healthcare rate changes in the future, but by contributing now with available funds that we have, we might be able to keep those rates less high than we'd like. So we're proposing to transfer about $770,000 in FY23 as a one-time transfer in the healthcare fund. And as you, you can see, that's only a portion of the amount that was incurred. So when you combine the changes in the CIP and the impact to the healthcare fund, these are the financial impacts to the school fund directly. So the decrease in state revenues on our operations was $400,000. The revision here proposes to reduce our transfer from recurring revenues to the CIP from $1.2 million to .8 million as a response. And then secondly, to, we also had a transfer to the CIP budgeted from one-time use of fund balance. So this proposal allocates about $770,000 that was originally budgeted for the CIP and allocates that to the healthcare fund. That bottom part represents a no net change in expenditures. So these are the appropriation impact to Fund 2000, the school fund. As I mentioned earlier, the state budget also includes a one-time bonus of $1,000. As you're aware, this, similar to compensation supplements, this only covers SOQ-funded instructional support positions, that is not our entire workforce. We anticipate having approximately 2,700 positions during the school year, and that would cost, when you add in the cost of FICA, about $2.9 million. So the one-time funding need would be 1.5. Again, this is just for information now, there's no recommendation being made, and we'll come back to you in the fall with a specific recommendation. The state proposal for this bonus is for December 1st of 2022. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer them. Otherwise, I'm here to ask that you approve the budget amendments.
Ms. Kumazawa, I had a question about the, can you back to the slide that has the changes to the CIP? So the CIP Holding Account Contingency, what will the effect be of not putting $5 million in there?
It, it really was a holding account. We had, in our FY23 budget, we had budgeted a $5 million transfer to the CIP in total, but we hadn't allocated that to any projects, knowing that we needed to have a contingency in place. So as you can see, we're not reducing any projects as they're presented in the budget, we're only adding to them. So it, the, if we had the full $5 million, it could have gone to anything else on here. And there are certainly needs, as you know.
Sure.
With renovations, further costs at Mountain View, replacement program. So that would have been wisely spent elsewhere, we just couldn't.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions from Ms. Kumazawa? If not, could you go back to the last slide? So this is what we will need a motion to address.
Okay. I move that we request the Board of Supervisors approve the attached appropriations and to amend the appropriations ordinance accordingly.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Lee, second by Mr. Alcarro, that we request the Board of Supervisors to attach or to look at the appropriations and to amend them accordingly. Any discussion on the motion? If not, Ms. Johnston.
Dr. Acuff?
Yes.
Ms. Lee?
Yes.
Ms. Osborne?
Yes.
Mr. Alcarro?
Yes.
Mr. Page?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Ms. Kumazawa, and thank you for your work all doing the budget process, for helping us. Are there any other items from board members or the superintendent for tonight's session?
No, sir. Thank you.
Okay, hearing none, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.